Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Common Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Fire?
Here.
Faisal?
Here.
Rosenbeck?
Here.
Bargander?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Whistle?
Here.
Fisher?
Yes, here.
Spiro?
Yes.
Muskie?
Here.
And Henler?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Two flag, United States of America. Item C, Public Comment. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council upon recognition by the mayor. Persons may address the council first stating their name and address. Council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. We are in a little bit of delay, so we'll start off. Mr. Wagner has a comment from Mr. Bill Pinker.
Thank you, your honor. These will be the comments of Mr. William Pinker, 600 Sycamore Avenue, Marshfield. He states, "I will be addressing two items discussed at your meeting on April 21, as well as an issue related to many of the discussions at that meeting. I am speaking from the podium because of one of them." That was his intent tonight. First of all, thank you for resuming public meeting. Thank you to those who are here tonight. When contact and interaction with local government is limited, curtailed, or denied, several things happen. The ability of citizens to interact with and participate in that government is adversely affected. The ability of citizens to praise and/or offer knowledgeable criticism of their government is adversely affected because they didn't see their government in action. The ability of the public to supervise their government, whether directly or indirectly, is also affected. In September 1968, Senator Edmund Muskie, in a speech in South Bend, Indiana, noted, quote, "You have the God-given right to kick the government around. Don't hesitate to do so," end quote. That's difficult to do when government is a split screen on Zoom, Skype, or Facebook. The mayor's proposal to establish a program to assist local business owners who are suffering during these hard times is commendable. There are, however, several issues which accompany the assistance plan. I present these not to establish a position, but to promote discussion. Point. Even though a need is intuitively obvious, the extent of the need was not clearly enumerated at the April 21 meeting. After watching the meeting two times, as well as most of the Economic Development Board meeting, I did not hear any defining statistics other than the vague number presented to Alderman Wagner only hours before your meeting. How many enterprises were included in a survey, if a survey was conducted? How many are in each of the major development areas noted in the comprehensive plan? What is the total number of enterprises and their identities that will suffer dire consequences, including closure, in the next 30 to 60 days? 60 to 90 days, 90 to 180 days, and beyond? In contrast, the Wausau River District, that's river west through downtown, released their summary data last week. Point. The funds to be used are, as noted by Aldermen Wagner and Whistle, public funds. The public deserves the information, whether it is from the city, the Chamber of Commerce and Industry, Main Street, Marshfield, or a combination of these groups. Point. As a result of this program, will the doors of the city treasury ever close? Please recall your discussions about providing funds for the family shelter. Point. However well-intended, is this a function of city government? How does this proposal align with a contingency plan for a major economic disruption in Marshfield? Whether it is an emergency plan, a standalone plan, or part of an all-hazard mitigation plan? And point. What information is being developed about the cascading effects of the dire consequences, including closures, on the following? One, property tax payment. Two, sales tax received. Three, room taxes. Four, utility payment. Five, potential unemployment. Six, potential reemployment within the remaining business mix. Seven, effects on local vendors serving the various enterprises. And eight, the effects on attaining the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and the downtown plan. Once again, I have presented these issues not to establish a position, but to provide material for discussion. This is typical, Mr. Pinker, in a non-related matter. Please define the technical terms before you use acronyms and abbreviations. The public needs to understand your discussions rather than be confused by them. Those are the comments, Mr. Pinker. He also includes the river block statistics. And for Deb Hall, there is a transcript of these to be provided in a minute. I'll provide them to you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you for reading those, Ed, and thank you very much, Mr. Pinker, for the input. Anyone else for a public comment? Josh is, yeah, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a letter from Aaron and Chris Howard, 402 West Park Street. They write, "Dear Council, Mayor, City Staff, Economic Development Board, Mackey and Main Street Marshfield, we want to thank everyone who is considering the plan to provide financial assistance to small businesses in Marshfield. As you know, our success in the community is directly impacted by the success of our small businesses. They make Marshfield a more desirable place to live and work, and their impact on our downtown, especially over the last few years, has been nothing short of extraordinary. There is no doubt that small businesses have been thriving in Marshfield, and there is no doubt that they will thrive again once COVID-19 is in our rearview mirror. That is, they will thrive once again if they are able to simply survive over the next few months. City Council, please don't underestimate the impact of your vote tonight. $2,000 may not seem like a lot of money compared to the challenges small businesses are facing right now. However, if $2,000 helps a small business survive for merely another month or two or three, that may buy them enough time to make it to the other side of COVID-19. Please help them survive long enough to thrive once again. Thank you again to all of you who love this town as much as we do. Thank you for working so hard to make this town amazing. Aaron and Chris Howard of Howard Properties."
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public wish to make a comment from the phone? Hearing none then, we'll close the public comment period. Item D, Approval of the Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from April 14th council meeting and the April 21 special council meeting? Motion by Mr. Fire, a second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Faisal?
Yes.
Rosenbeck?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whistle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spiro?
Yes.
Butkie?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E, Staff Updates. Any staff updates, Steve?
Yes, Mayor, I have two this evening. The first is just an update on the COVID-19 staffing issue. You know, recently you approved the staffing schedule changes proposed by the police chief, and those are in place and moving forward. And I just want to let you know that the one that was authorized back at the end of March under emergency purposes with the public works, parks, and wastewater has been modified a little bit. They've now gone back to, streets and parks have gone to four 10-hour days. They're still separating workgroups as best they can to try and keep people apart so that we don't have cross-contamination if there is a COVID case, but they've made adjustments, and wastewater continues to work the same 12-hour day situation that they were before. And I might add that I just want to commend Dan, Sam, Justin, and Chris, Ollie, for the work they've done to make these discussions work and the decisions work and work things out for everyone to keep the departments going well. The other item I have is, normally our CIP first meeting would have been, would be set for April 30th, which is this Thursday. CIP took a little bit of a backseat, and there's been some work done here behind the scenes trying to make it all work. And, but we did ask in a recent email that we move the dates back to have a first meeting on Thursday, May 14, and then the second meeting if necessary on Thursday, May 28. I guess I want to make sure that those dates are okay with you. My hope was that the CIP meeting would be held in person. It would be a little bit easier for the presenters to be at the podium and discuss some of these projects, but I don't want to put it out too far either, so I kind of put it with the council's discretion here. Staff's perspective right now is of today is that we have the first meeting on Thursday, May 14, which is almost certainly going to be, I would think, virtual. By the 28th, if we have a second meeting, perhaps that would be in person. But if the council wishes to back it up, I mean, it's not like we couldn't move that back two weeks farther if need be and have the first meeting on Thursday, May 28. So I look for your discussion tonight. Any concerns? You want to back it up, or you want to stay with the 14th and the 28th?
Anything from the council? Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, and Steve advised me as to whether the finance department has had any time to at least give some ballpark figures of what damages the shutdown is going to cause the city in a budget way, and would those be included in the CIP?
Well, I don't know if they would be included in the CIP. I think it'd be best for us to get the information out to you on the side in advance. You know, I don't know that it's had a great impact, but we certainly could have said that prior to the first meeting.
Steve, is the, is city staff prepared to have a meeting Thursday if the council would want to stay with it? Is staff ready?
Yeah, we would be ready, Mayor, on Thursday, May 14th, to have that meeting. I just want to make sure, and I'm not asking to change tonight from the 14th and the 28th of May for those two CIP work session dates. My only concern is if somebody on the council was to say, "Look, I prefer to back it up so that there's a greater likelihood we'll all be in the same room for said meeting." We can do that, but otherwise, we're prepared for Thursday, May 14.
Okay. Mr. Fisher?
I was just gonna say that I think we should just meet as planned on the 14th. If something changes between now and then, we can...
Fair enough. Did you get that, Steve?
I did hear that, and that's fine. We'll just go with Thursday, the 14th, at 6:00 PM for the first CIP meeting. And if we need a second one, that would be on Thursday, the 28th of May, also at 6:00 PM. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Item F, Mayor's Comments. None tonight. Item G, Council Comments. Any comments from the council? Don't see any waving hands. Any H, any reports from commissions, boards, or committees? Seeing none, go to the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to receive and place and file approving all recommended actions in the Consent Agenda? Is there a motion by Mr. Peschel, second by Mr. Butkie? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Faisal?
Yes.
Rosenbeck?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whistle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spiro?
Yes.
Butkie?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item K, Request to Approve Budget Resolution Number 04-2020, Transferring $100,000 Within the Economic Development Fund. From fund balance applied to contribution, presented by Josh Miller, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, last week we met, and the mayor had proposed a program to assist small businesses in the community. The original funding source for that was going to be contingency, but that program was referred back to the Economic Development Board because this is really an economic development situation. The Economic Development Board had an opportunity to meet on Friday, and they were very interested in this program. I think they see the definite need for this program in the community, and they actually were willing to contribute up to $100,000 for the program from the Economic Development Fund. So that's really the purpose of this resolution tonight, budget resolution tonight, is to allow them to transfer the funds or transfer the budget from the fund balance of the 205 Economic Development Fund to allow them to, their contribution fund, where they can expend that money this year. So I don't know if this is the time to go through the program or not, Mayor. I don't see, I don't know what's, the changes for the program that we had sent out to the council, but I guess the initial action, or the requested action is for the council to approve the budget resolution.
It was in the, wasn't it in the Consent Agenda in the EDB Board met?
I'm not sure where the packet, Steve, do you know where this program was included in the packet?
I don't know what was in the packet to begin with, certainly with the council out tonight or just the minutes from that meeting, where they made several motions that give a pretty good idea of what the program was going to look like, but then I know you've since done a sort of a repackaging of the description.
Yeah, so I guess it's up to the council if they want me to review this, any changes to the program and cover things, or if they want to leave it up to staff to administer, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to address.
So why don't we say we get a motion and a second, then we can discuss it if need be. A motion by Mr. Fire, a second by Mr. Wagner. Any discussion? Before we go to a roll call vote, then I would just really like to thank the EDB and the two aldermen that are on that committee, Mr. Fisher and Mr. Butkie. I watched that, I watched the entire meeting, and I really appreciate what I watched that, I watched the entire meeting, and I really appreciate what you did. That was, I think it's going to be very, very helpful for businesses, so thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
Rosenbach?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
Handler?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item L, first reading of ordinance number 1432, amending the legal description contained within ordinance number 1429, presented by Bryce Unbrook, City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. So in March, the Common Council approved an annexation request and approved ordinance number 1429. We received a call from a staff member at Marathon County who mentioned that the legal description did not properly close the boundaries on the certified survey map. So city staff spoke with the Department of Administration, a state department, to determine the best way to fix this issue. They said to simply amend the legal description in the ordinance that passed. So the property has been annexed into the city, however, we just needed to make this small change just to clean up the legal description. Other than the revised legal description, there are no other changes that are being proposed. Since this is something that we approved and we're just kind of making a small change, we are going to recommend to suspend the rules and approve ordinance number 1432.
Thank you very much. There's a motion by Mr. Whittle, is that to suspend the rules?
Yes.
To suspend the rules and approve ordinance number 1432. Is there a second by Mr. Fisher? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
Rosenbach?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
Handler?
Yes.
Can you wait? Okay.
You don't.
You lost, okay, can you give a thumbs up for a yes and a thumbs down for a no? How about that? No, okay, we don't know.
I'll consider her abstaining.
Okay, that's fine.
And then Butky?
Yes.
Handler?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We don't need, Steve, we don't need two motions for that, right? We suspend the rules and approve it all in the same one?
No, we need a motion to approve now.
Now, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 1432? Motion by Mr. Whittle, second by Mr. Wagner? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Fire?
Yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
Rosenbach?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
Handler?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Item M, first reading of ordinance number 1433, Municipal Code Amendment, request by the City of Marshfield to amend chapters 4, 9, and 18 in order to establish a licensing program for regulating, regulating short-term rental housing, presented by Bryce Unbrook, City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. So over the past few months, staff has presented some options to the Plan Commission and the Common Council on how to regulate, regulate short-term rentals here in the city. State law has changed, and so our short-term rental regulations are no longer complying with the state law, so we will add a minimum need to change it to comply with state law. So with that, the city, city staff is proposing to create a licensing procedure through chapter 9 that would include regulations and a procedure for obtaining a short-term rental license. And we would also, we're also recommending in this ordinance to amend part of chapter 4 in order to add short-term rentals to obtain a room tax permit. And then we are also amending chapter 18 to clean up the zoning code references and to allow short-term rentals as an accessory use permitted by right in all districts as long as the operator of the short-term rental paying the license. So I'll just quickly go through what the city can and cannot do in terms of short-term rental regulations according to the state law. The city can add regulations on short-term rentals, but we cannot completely prohibit short-term rentals. We can ban the rental of residential dwellings for a period of six days or less, but we would not be able to ban above seven days. Anything that's rented for more than 30 days is not considered to be a short-term rental. That would just be a normal rental situation. And we can also collect local room taxes and can require licenses or permits. And so, yeah, some of the proposed regulations are included in the packet, so I won't go over all of them, but I'll go over some of the main ones. First, no person shall maintain, manage, or operate a short-term rental without a short-term rental license. Anyone that would be operating without one would be subject to fines as stated in section 105 of our municipal code. I think the first time offense is $5 to $500. The second time offense would be $10 to $750. So if they're operating without one, there would be some enforcement that we can do. Because I know that was a big key from the Plan Commission was how we would enforce it. Each short-term rental is required to have the following licenses and permits. They need to have a tourist grooming house license from either Wood County or Marathon County, so they have their health department inspect the units for health inspection reasons, and then a seller's permit from the Wisconsin Department of Revenue, and then a room tax permit from the city. There would also be a requirement of two off-street parking spaces, and then occupancy shall be limited to two persons per bedroom plus an additional two persons at no time exceeding a total guest. That was one of the regulations that was in our current, our current zoning code that we thought we could transfer over pretty easily. And then there's a couple others that are listed in the packet as well. I, as I mentioned, Plan Commission mentioned that they had some concerns with enforcement. With our regulations being non-compliant with the state, we weren't really able to do much enforcing. Now with this license, we can enforce those that don't have a permit, or there's a lot of people that don't know that they need a permit or license, so we would inform them that they have to get that and then to go through the states and the county. And by having them go to the same county, we can work with the same county to say, hey, this person has applied for one, because I don't think too many people have applied for a county license, so we're hoping to change that with our licensing program. And then we can track the short-term rentals in the city and also collect room tax, just like a hotel or motel would. And then after this, letters will be sent out to the short-term rentals that we are aware of, and I think we have eight or nine on that list, so we would just let them know of what's changing, what they have to do. We plan on making a, kind of a guide on how to apply for this permit process online. I think we are going to have the licensing fee set to $10. We'll be bringing that to a fee schedule here soon. But most importantly, all proposed changes would make, ensure that the city is complying with state statutes. This is only the first reading at this time, so the final approval would be at the second reading on May 12th. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Mr. Whittle?
Thank you. What is the current, under the current ordinance, the way it's written, what are the fees that we would need to undergo in order to be licensed to be able to do this under our current ordinance?
I'm sorry, I don't think I heard, did you say fees?
Yes, there's, there were a variety of fees that were required for rezoning and all sorts of other things. Do you have an idea what those fees were?
Yeah, so for a conditional use permit, it would be $250. So if they were in a mixed-use district already, they would have to pay $250. If they were not in a mixed-use district and they had to rezone first, then that would be another $250. So you're looking at possibly $500. And also, it's, it's not always the easiest to rezone from a residential to a commercial use, so there could also be a chance of having to amend the comprehensive plan as well, which would add another fee as well. So you're looking at a minimum of $250.
Okay. And under this new policy that we're looking at approving in the next meeting, all the licensing, I'm assuming none of the licensing goes through the city, it's all going to go through the county? Is that what I'm understanding?
So we would have, the $10 licensing fee would go through us, that would cover our staff time, which won't take much time. But then a lot of the costs do go to, I think the counties are over 100. I think some range between 100 and $125 in fees. Those cover a sanitaryian inspection, and then the state, I believe, is over $100 as well. So there's some costs that, their fees are kind of higher, but from the city perspective, we're not, other than just making sure that they're compliant to our procedures and our regulations, we don't really need to charge a high fee because we're not doing any inspections.
I guess the thing that concerns me is that, I realize there are a lot of these types of businesses that are happening, that are happening under the radar, so to speak, and I do also know that there are a few people who have gone through and jumped through all the hoops and have paid 250, 500, maybe more to go through everything to get their property to a point where they were able to do some type of rental. And now what, what concerns me is that now we're going to pass this, and we're going to slap them with another couple hundred dollar fees, saying, oh, thanks for everything you did and for complying to our previous law, but now we're changing the law, and so here's a nice little bill for you for a couple hundred dollars more that you can go ahead and get done. So I wish there was a way that we could look at somehow providing a help or a, you know, a waiving or something else, but if it's two totally different entities, I don't see that that's a possibility, that that's just one thing that really bothers me. We're going to be penalizing those that have gone through and done it the right way by charging them with yet more fees. Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Nick?
Yes, Bryce, I just have one question. I noticed in the proposal that you have a limit of 180 days in a year, so I was just wondering where that came from.
Yeah, that was just a common regulation that other cities have done. I kind of threw that out, out there to see if the Plan Commission, and I think I might have included it the last time we came to council, and if we wanted to extend that, we don't have to have any limits, but we have to at least allow 180 days for it to be used. So there's not really a reason other than most municipalities, municipalities have that. I, by looking at the sites like Airbnb, I would think that most of them don't rent for more than 180 days, so I don't know if that would be an issue, but we'd be open to exploring, you know, maybe having no limit or a $250 day limit. 180 is just what's, what's kind of typical from other municipalities.
Okay.
Any further questions from the council? All right. Don't see any waving hands. Item N, request to approve policy number 303.980, Public Health Emergency Employee Travel, presented by Jen Rayquell, Human Resource Director.
Thank you. So recently, the city drafted a policy that would address non-essential business travel, essential business travel, and then personal travel for employees during the pandemic. And we were establishing the policy to try to clarify for staff what is required in these scenarios. The city is following guidelines established through Executive Order 12, Executive Order 28, which were issued by Governor Evers, guidelines by the Centers of Disease Control, and then Wood and Marathon County Health Departments, as well as the Wisconsin Health Department. Since we actually put together the policy, there's been Executive Order 34, which expands things a bit more, so we're continuing to look through those scenarios. But what I'd like to do is go through the policy with you or the key points, share that with you, and then certainly open it up to any questions. But before we even get into those key points, I do want to share with you that we have had much discussion about this within City Hall, specifically with comments by both leaders and staff, so I want you to be aware of that, because there are some concerns in terms of how this is potentially impeding personal travel. So I'll go through the policy and certainly would open it up to any questions that you might have. So key points, what we put in the policy is definitions for essential travel, non-essential travel, and then personal travel related to COVID-19. If we find that an employee can't avoid essential travel and they have to remain away from work, that they know that they might have to be away from work for an extended period of time depending on travel, or if they're exposed or what have you, so that staff are aware of that. We'd also have said employees are prepared to be, to remain off of work and might be asked to self-quarantine at home for 14 days upon their return in the event that they should participate in personal travel. Again, with these scenarios, each case needs to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, and again focused on the safety of both our employees as well as city staff and the community. So for our employees, if they choose to travel for personal reasons in violation of the Safer At Home program, which again continues to change, then they would, they should expect to remain off of work. We would ask them to self-quarantine and again review that on a case-by-case basis. If they are required to quarantine for those 14 days or work remotely, self-quarantine, not provided by a healthcare provider, we would look to see whether or not they have the ability to work remotely. If they have the ability to work remotely, they would continue to work as normal, we would pay them as normal. If they are not able to tell a work and, and that is not an option for them, then that 14 days that they would be required to be away from work, they'd be using vacation, personal holiday time, or compensatory time to supplement their income. In any cases, if there's trouble, we'd expect our employees to self-monitor themselves for symptoms for up to 14 days, and then if symptoms do arise, we would have said to contact Human Resources, we can walk through them with our options, whether that's family medical leave, or employer paid sick leave, or any of the policies that we'll be talking about in a few minutes. So at this point, I would certainly open it up for questions. I can certainly talk through some of the concerns that staff have brought forward and answer anything that you have.
All right. Is there a motion to approve policy number 3.980? A motion by Mr. Butky, a second, is there a second? Second by Mr. Fire, discussion? Mr. Whittle?
Thank you. I'm kind of curious as to why this is coming up now when we've been under Safer At Home for a while. This seems like it's a little late coming to us at this point. Is there a reason for that?
There is. You know, honestly, our stance was that we don't want to create a policy if we don't need to have a policy. We were not aware of any concerns with employee travel over the last month, but recently we've had a couple of cases where some travel has occurred, and so we walked through that process to address the concerns. However, one of the issues that came up is the request that we let staff know what to expect if they should choose to go outside of the Safer At Home guidelines, how we would address that and what our expectations are as a city of them returning to work.
Okay, and how do you plan on enforcing this? Because what I would anticipate is if somebody wants to be violating, they're just not going to say anything, and they're just going to do it. So how does this get enforced?
They may not. So it really is a self-enforcement. We expect that people will follow the guidelines to the best of their ability, they would self-monitor their activities, and if they would compromise themselves either by being within six feet of someone, or traveling to areas, or dependent on the type of travel they may do, then what we would ask them to do is notify their leader and Human Resources, and we would work through when they may be able to return to work. Now, it certainly isn't perfect, and if we have scenarios where concerns are reported, we would certainly look, you know, to look into those concerns and address them, but it really is a self-reporting scenario.
And this appears to go until December?
We wrote it till December, but the intent would only to be in place as long as we need it to be.
Okay, and how do we determine that?
Oh, we would follow the guidelines either provided by the Wisconsin Department of Health Services, looking at Wood County, Marathon County. CDC may also change it if Safer At Home changes, we would look at those requirements as well.
Okay, and another question regarding personal travel, it says it's not recommended based on et cetera, et cetera, and it says anything outside of the community. And it's my understanding that state parks are open, or at least some are now reopening. Those would be outside of our community. It's my understanding that people can go fishing, that's outside of our community. My understanding that camping will be allowed, that's outside of our community. So I'm wondering why it's worded this way, that would prevent people from being able to take, take advantage of those things.[1780.21] For example, if I'm a city employee and I want to walk through the marsh at McMillan, that's outside the community.
We talked a little bit about that today. Community is going to change depending on the location or where the person might reside. And so, um, there was limited guidance. Again, keep in mind this policy was written last week and there have been some changes since, um, since then. Um, however, even in, uh, the executive order fax that came out yesterday, it does say people are strongly encouraged to stay home, not travel to secondary homes, cabins, or not travel outside of the state if necessary. I fully agree with you that, you know, it does seem to, um, contradict in times when you see that these scenarios are now open. However, uh, it is also noted very clearly in the, in the documents that people need to social distance. And so we would certainly want to look at every, um, individual case-by-case basis if they had questions, concerns, be able to determine whether or not they would be able to return to work or whether they needed to work remotely if that was available.
Okay. This just seems quite, um, tight on, uh, what is, is and is not, and more specifically what is not allowed. Um, I would also like to, um, get some input, uh, from staff. I know that the people that are currently logged in right now to this meeting are primarily of a supervisory position. So perhaps if they could weigh in both from a perspective of them, them, they themselves as employees, but also, um, any thoughts they have regarding them, they, um, in the role of the supervisor and having to enforce this.
Rick?
I guess I can just say, uh, from staff here, um, like Jen had said, there's, there's a lot of confusion with the continual changes with the governor's order, um, interpretation differences with regards to Wood County Human Services or, I mean, Health Department. Uh, and, you know, one of the questions was, well, you can't leave your community. Well, I have one employee that lives 22 miles from Marshfield, 25 miles from, uh, Stevens Point and 20 miles from Rapids. So really what is his community, uh, when he's out in the country and, and really in no man's land, but between three of the major communities in the area. So it does, um, add some confusion to that. Uh, Jen has said within reason that, uh, the department had, can use discretion, but still following the, the states and, and local, um, orders, which is, you know, um, non-essential travel should be, um, you know, trying to avoid it at all costs. But again, it makes it hard when the governor opens up non-essential businesses for curbside pickup. But now that's considered a non-essential travel still because you're going to a non-essential business and that's even local. As you've all seen, Menards, Walmart, um, many other retailers in town are really busy. And some say, well, if I go and self-quarantine up in Metford or up in Phillips and I'm not going to be meeting with anyone, um, will I have to then come back and self-quarantine when I really was exposed to fewer people than I would be, um, in our own community here if we live in the city? So it is difficult. And I, I told Jen earlier today that I don't envy her whatsoever just because it's very difficult to, to put some directives in place and some guidance, uh, governor's order changing, uh, sometimes on a weekly or daily basis.
Any other city staff? Um, Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just mention that, uh, even amongst all the guidance from the local, state and federal level, there is not consistency in the guidance that, that's out there. So it's, it's really difficult to put a policy together that, that captures everything. Um, and what, what we're seeing is even the guidance that is there is somewhat dated. Uh, Jen had mentioned that last week that when the policy was put together, we're lying on guidance, uh, on our, um, state website that dates back to April 19th. So the guidance is not keeping up with the executive order. So it makes it very difficult to put a policy together, um, not to mention the difficulty in enforcing it. Uh, as Alderman Whittle mentioned, many of these areas around our state are opening up for outdoor activities and we have staff who are, of course, wanting to take advantage of that. So how do we enforce that, um, when they're not allowed to, to leave the community? Uh, so I, I think it's a real challenge to put this policy in place, um, and, um, not sure we're ever going to get a good answer on it. I mean, I think there's some common sense things that, uh, that need to take place as far as, uh, if people have symptoms and, and the self-monitoring, the social distancing, um, but I'm not sure the policy gets at all that. Uh, really what we're trying to control is behavior and making sure people have, uh, good behavior and social distancing. Travel is not necessarily a bad behavior. It's what do they do when they're traveling? That's really the issue. So, and, and I'm not sure how we get at that in a policy. It might be more, more of a task than we can really accomplish here.
Lori, did I see your, um, yeah, please.
You did. I, I see some wisdom in the policy in that it, it does inform our employees of what type of behavior we do expect of them in terms of protecting themselves, protecting other people that they work with, and then also the public that they serve. Um, we've just begun pickup service. And so, um, uh, to have my staff understand that, um, they're expected to, to be cautious in what they're doing and that there, that there are potential consequences. I do appreciate the fact that there is a case-by-case, um, possibility here. Perhaps there is a way to, within the policy, tie it to, um, one particular source of information coming out of the government, the, the state government, and, and have that policy be somewhat fluid in terms of how it's applied.
Thank you. Uh, and Nick, did I see your hand up? Please.
Yes. Um, I was contacted earlier today by a member of the police bargaining unit who was concerned about the, uh, the, uh, policy being proposed, uh, for the, many of the reasons that Alderman Whittle has explained. Um, the, the ability to go fishing or to play golf outside the community, um, since we don't have, we didn't propose options in the community necessarily. Um, but as, in, in conjunction with that, they were really concerned because, um, if their supervisor or whoever's going to be making the determination decides that they have to be sent home for 14 days and losing 14 days of, um, compensatory time of some sort, vacation or sick time or something like that, um, concerned about that. There's also the concern about, you know, going to, um, for instance, shopping in La Salle at the Sam's Club or like Alderman Whittle said, some of these employees travel, they don't live in the community, they're traveling outside the community already. Um, I, I'm questioned whether we need to have a policy at this point or whether we should just be issuing guidelines to control and advise our employees how they should behave when they're not on duty as well as on duty.
Uh, Tom?
Well, um, my concern was and the concern from some staff here were that, you know, you've got permission to go golfing, you have permission to go to campgrounds, but you can't go to a private property that's outside the community or a cabin or do maintenance where you may be in contact with less people than you would be at a public facility.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have some concerns with this policy. Um, what I find concerning is when we try to control behavior outside of the workplace. And so, uh, I understand that we want to keep people safe. We do not want people to be sick. Um, but some of the points that have been made, uh, this very evening, um, are, in my opinion, very logical. Um, if I want to go to a campground outside of my community and the campground is open, um, it seems to me that the policy would restrict employees from doing that. Um, and the reality is we don't know exactly when this safer-at-home order is. And people's mental health is very important. And when you quarantine people to the point where they are unable to even enjoy living, I, I mean, I worry about some of my own, some of my own neighbors who are elderly, uh, staying home. They need to be out. They need to be, and yes, they need to be safe, but they need to be out. And I find it concerning that we are trying to control behavior and I also find it, uh, concerning that we would, it seems to me penalize people if we found out that they broke the rule and they would possibly have to take, um, vacation time, et cetera, if they can't work from home. And I find that troubling, uh, to put our employees in that position. Thank you.
Mr. Butky?
Yeah, I agree with, with Mr. Fisher. I don't think we need a policy. One thing I haven't heard though, if you were going to have a policy and you knowingly went to a hotspot that got a lot of the virus, that would be a different case. If you're going to Milwaukee or some of these places, that's a total different story. But I don't think we need a policy.
Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, listening to this, I, I'm thinking in terms of what we can rightfully control and what we can't control. And we can control, uh, the travel for our employees, uh, for business purposes, whether, and we can determine whether it's essential or non-essential, and we can establish rules and regulations for those, which I think are, which I think are well-founded. Once we get out of the realm of employment, uh, I think we're in some very, we're in some very gray area. Perhaps what we need to do is make the reference that any, any personal travel is subject to the prevailing rules that may be, uh, in place from time to time by the governor or, or whatever, or even the legislature. Who knows if they're going to get involved with it and God knows what will happen. But, uh, again, I think the, the policy that we're discussing here should be limited strictly to business travel in behalf of the city of Marshfield, and we should probably not look beyond that, uh, except in, in terms of guidance, um, maybe if, if somebody, uh, if I, if there, there's some, there's something out there about state-to-state travel, and I think that might be, uh, that, that might be more, um, uh, we might recommend that as a guideline to say that if you are traveling, uh, state-to-state for personal reasons, we expect that you follow the guidelines of quarantine or self-quarantine or whatever, uh, for X number of days. You could do that. If that is what the, the state or the feds are telling us, then we'll let them take the responsibility for trying to, uh, pin Jello to the wall. That, that's what we're trying to do here. I mean, this is, this is a very feeble type of thing. Um, I, I would, I, I know what we can control and I know what we can't control. And I think maybe the, the, we should ask, um, the, uh, HR department to take this back and, uh, restructure it along those lines. As a matter of fact, I'll make a motion to be referred to HR.
A motion to, uh, refer to HR. Is there a second? Uh, Mr. Butky? Any discussion? Um, before we go to a, uh, before we go to a vote, I think, you know, with this policy, I understand the intent and I, I agree with many of the council members in the fact that, uh, you know, we do have to be careful on the travel when people are at work. But when they're not at work, they do have a constitutional right to freedom. I don't think any city government should try to impose on that. We have a constitutional freedom and I don't think, I don't, I, I appreciate the policy and I understand the intent of the policy. Un, unfortunately, what's happening is we're getting such, and, and Jen, you did a great job on this, but the, the information coming down from the state is just ridiculous. It's changing every minute, but what is not changing is our constitutional right. And I don't think as a city, we should try to impose any, any restrictions on employees when they are not working. I, I just, I just don't think that's right. So there was a motion and a second to Mr. Wagner's, uh, proposal to go, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Butky.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I, and I agree, I second the motion to send it back. But I do want to thank Jen. Jen, thank you. I know what you're trying to do to keep all of our people safe. So thank you for that, but I agree that we probably don't need it other than what the governor puts on. Thank you.
All right. Seeing, uh, Mr. Bark?
Yeah, I just want to tack on one thing. Uh, I, I respect all the comments and concerns and the idea of sending it back for, for more review and maybe bringing back something lesser or whatever ends from this. I just want to remind people that we have done a lot of things in an attempt to protect the, our workplace safety as far as breaking up work teams and, and doing different schedules and closing facilities. So, uh, I get, I get what you're all saying and I'm not arguing with you, but, uh, you know, we are trying as best we can to, uh, protect the safety of, and health of our employees. So, uh, keep that in mind as well.
Uh, uh, Mr. Whittle?
Uh, thank you. And, and as this, uh, potential policy is, um, reevaluated and reworked, I don't know that it would be, um, unreasonable to perhaps identify that if there's concern of illness that a, a person may need to be quarantined for 14 days and to specify how that's going to work. But the idea of, you know, such restrictions, I think, what is the big concern right now?
All right. Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Rosenbich?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Farrell?
No.
Butky?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item O, request to approve revised policy number 3521, Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act, uh, retroactive to April 7th, 2020, presented by Jen Ray Q, human resource director.
Thank you. So in your packet, you'll find a memo that, um, addresses both items Q and P. Um, first we'll talk about the, um, the Employer Paid Sick Leave Act. So these, there are actually three policies that were put into place on April 1st, um, involved to the Families First Coronavirus Act. Um, they were the Employee Paid Sick Leave Act, the employer or emergency responder sick leave policy that we put in place for our employees that are not, um, that are considered emerge, emergency responders and not eligible under the Employee Paid Sick Let, Sick Act, and then the Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act. So these were some federal guidelines that had, uh, come down, uh, as a result of, of COVID-19 and so policies were drafted and put into place to address those. Now, when they were put in place, we were not meeting regularly, so they were authorized, um, by Steve Barg as we went forward with, uh, the, the powers that you had granted him at that time. Uh, after those policies were put in place, the Department of Labor issued new, uh, changes to them. So in your packet, you're going to see red line copies, uh, for each of the policies that we're going to talk about. Again, starting with the Employee Paid Sick Leave Act, uh, really what we added was clarification, uh, to the fact that this will not go beyond the end of this year. Um, unless an order changes, we would plan to continue that. Uh, it clarifies the qualifying reasons where you would get employee paid sick leave, clarifies what telework is and how an employee is determined to be able to telework. It defines an individual, uh, for Employee Paid Sick Leave Act purposes, um, how they must put the leave in writing, what the leave, um, request must contain, and then that the full, um, day increment for a day of employee paid sick leave would, would apply unless the city, uh, agrees otherwise. So, uh, the final change was that, uh, we could prorate employee paid sick leave for somebody who was less than 40 hours. So the, um, policy is updated and in your packet. If I don't, if you don't have any questions, I would ask for your approval of that policy.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve, uh, the revised policy number 3521? Motion by Mr. Rosenbich, second by Mr. Peschall. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Rosenbich?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Item, uh, P, request to approve revised policy number 3528, Emergency Family and Medical Leave Act, retroactive to April 7th, 2020, presented by Jen Ray Q.
Thank you. This is another policy that was amended after, uh, we had had our policy written and clarified. Uh, really the changes to this policy, again, uh, clarifies that it ends as of December 31st. The Employee Family Made, or Family and Medical Leave Extension Act actually is there to allow employees to take more than, or to take up to 12 weeks of family medical leave if they have to be, um, at home to care for a dependent child who is unable to care for themselves due to either daycare closure, closure or school closure. Uh, just to give you a, a brief overview on that. So, um, it clarified who the leave applies to if it's the employee's child. It clarified the fact that the EFMLEA leave is reduced by any other family medical leave that an employee may have taken during the calendar year that we set or the, I'm sorry, the family medical leave year that we set. Um, it talks about notification requirements, the duration and the scheduling of the leave, talks about how telework would apply in these scenarios, and then really frames the fact that it applies the first 10 days under the Employee Paid Sick Leave Act, that, that focuses on a two-week period versus a 10-day period. Um, and then finally a verification piece is included so that we can get confirmation from a from a school or private childcare provider that says the care is no longer available. So those are the changes in general. If you don't have any questions, I would request your approval of revised policy 3.528, the Emergency Family Medical Leave Expansion Act policy.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the revised policy number 3528? Motion by Mr. Henler, second by Mr. Wagner. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
Rosenbach?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Witzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item Q, request to approve revised seasonal pay plan effective May 1, 2020, presented by Gen Ray Q.
Thank you. So in your packet, you're going to find the revised seasonal pay plan schedule. We had updated this policy last year in April and then had a brief change to it in July of 2019. Every year, a request from the departments and division heads, if they have any recommended changes and the justification for those changes. In the memo, you'll see that there are pretty limited changes. It really has to do with zoo operations, some of our internship plans, and then our crossing guards. In regard to the park and recreation positions, those were really in need to be adjusted to help recruit and retain some of our zoo staff. That is our zoo intern, our zoo attendant, our zookeeper assistant, and our zoo education coordinator. And then we also looked at the park and cemetery operations. For the positions that I just talked about, we were looking at an increase of $1 per hour. They were fairly low, starting at $8 an hour. We're looking to start that range at $9 now. And then for some of the positions that sat within a range, we just wanted to extend the top end of that range in order to help retain some of the employees that have already been here with us and give them an ability to earn a bit more. If you look at our parks and cemetery operations, you'll see that we extended the top end of that range. It had been $10 to $12 an hour. We're looking to arrange that, to increase that top end to $1,350 in that particular position. Or in those positions, we look at the skill of the employees coming in to determine that wage. In regard to our engineering interns, Tom Turci had done a review of competitors with the Wisconsin DOT and the Minnesota DOT, and we looked to increase those wages by 25 cents per hour for each of those positions to be more competitive with some of our competition. And then finally, in regard to crossing guards, we currently pay $11 an hour for crossing guards who are with us for their first four years. Once they get to five years, it had gone up to $1,150. We feel after five years, it would be more appropriate to increase their rate of pay to $1,250 to retain, to retain the crossing guards. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, I would ask for your approval of the revised pay schedule that would be effective May 1 of 2020.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the seasonal pay plan? Motion by Mr. Budke. Is there a second by Mr. Rosenbach? Any discussion? Mr. Budke?
Yeah, I've been harping on this a little bit with Jen, and thank you, Jen, for doing this. This is long overdue. Thank you.
And Mr. Witzel?
Thank you. I'm a little surprised that the zoo positions are going up so significantly compared to the engineering. Were we that drastically underpaying those zoo positions? Were we, were we overpaying the engineering positions? Why is there such a difference? A dollar raise for the one and a quarter raise for the other?
Sure. Well, Justin is also on the call and may want to speak to it as well. But in the discussions that I had with Ben, these are positions that are sometimes hard to fill and retain. The zoo operates with a very limited full-time staff, and so the part-time temporary staff that they get, they were really looking to increase. So, Justin, if there's anything you want to add?
No, that's correct. It is becoming more competitive. I just think the market as a whole for employees and employers is becoming more competitive. So we're just trying to set pace.
As a follow-up, then, if Tom could touch on why only a quarter raise for his engineers?
Just because I was looking at what some of the other entities pay and for what we have had over the past couple of years for employees. We've had some pretty good employees for what we've had. I don't want it to fall too far behind where we can't fill the positions.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner?
Yes, thank you. Out of the department heads, sure that our budgets can absorb this? I mean, we were supposed to, we were supposed to be budgeting fairly tight in the past couple of years. I know all of this is like, this is obviously not something that was counted on when we budgeted in December of last year. How are you covering this in your budget? Or do you really have that much loose in your budget that we want me to know about?
That was bad.
Tom, you can take it.
Tom?
All right, Ed. That's a great, I just want to let you know, in a typical summer, that 25 cents an hour raise is about $150. I think we can kind of absorb that in our projects.
You shouldn't.
Any, for, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Absolutely, yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
Rosenbach?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
No.
Witzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item R, request to reject bids received for the Cemetery Colombrarium project presented by Justin Casperson Parks and Rec director.
Thank you, Mayor. The Board of Public Works authorized the solicitation of bids for a new colombrarium on March 2 at the Hillside Cemetery. The city received five bids. I did include in the packet and down below the five bid summary. After we opened the bids, it was brought to our attention that there were some inconsistencies between the bids. Some of the companies included aspects of the project that were not required. And of course, some of the companies failed to include some aspects that were not, that were required. So based on the comments and having to probably go through this whole process with them individually, we thought it might be in the best interest of the city to reject all the bids and rebid the project. The new bid documents will have much more clear aspects on what should be included, what should not be included, as well as we think we'll get much more competitive bids. It's hard to know how competitive we are with these bids because some of these people did include the wrong things and some forgot to include things. So my proposal is to reject all the bids and then re-advertise the bids to bring back to the board for consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to reject the project bids? Motion by Mr. Witzel, second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
Rosenbach?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Witzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Request to approve, approve beverage operator license applications of the following persons: Michelle, Alec Paula, Alana Everett, Nikita Gertis, Jared Hopperditzel, Raina Lozelle, James Miller, Dakota Opelt, Kim Quatrochi, Lindsey Reamer, and Jay Schiller, presented by Deb Hall, City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The individuals listed on your agenda have applied for a beverage operator license. They have all been run through a background check and came back with no problems. Therefore, I am recommending approval of their, of their application.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the licenses as presented? Motion by Mr. Fire, second by Mrs. Sparrows. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
Rosenbach?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Witzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item T, request to approve six-month Class B fermented malt beverage license renewal for May 1, 2020 through October 31, 2020 for the Marshfield Softball Association, presented by Deb Hall, City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The Marshfield Softball Association has applied for a renewal of their Class B beer license, which is a six-month license that runs from May 1 through October 31. It has been run through a background check and it's been published in the paper with no objections heard. Therefore, I recommend approval of their application.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the license as presented? Motion by Mr. Fire, second by Nick. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
Rosenbach?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Witzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item U, request to approve the mayor's citizens' appointments to various committees, boards, and commissions. The only thing you'll note is that the one person, Dean Pitt, is withdrawn and Andy Keo was put in there. And with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the mayor appointments. Motion by Mr. Witzel, second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Henler?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Witzel?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Rosenbach?
Yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
Rosenbach?
Yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
And Fire?
Yes.
Thank you. Item V, appointment of Deb Johnson, 1507 North Broadway Avenue to the library board to complete a term ending April 30, 2021. She's replacing somebody that had to leave. So there's no, there's no urgency to this, and there's, there's nothing at this time that we have to do. It's information only. However, you do have questions on that. Mr. Witzel?
Thank you. When is the next meeting that this person might potentially be involved with?
Actually, would be the third Tuesday of May.
Third Tuesday of May. So there's no hurry then at this point?
Yeah.
And just, just one further quick question. I don't know if this particular board, this is library, right? I don't know if this particular board follows the same policy regarding city residency or not, because it actually, the service area of the library is larger. I was kind of curious if it does. And if it doesn't, do we have people from outside the city that also represent?
For the majority of board members, it does follow city residency. However, there's an appointment by the school district of a member to the board. There's also a resident from the town of McMillan because we are a joint library with them. And the possibility would be that Wood County could choose to appoint a member to our board as well because they provide a significant amount of support to the library. As of this point, they have not done that. But otherwise, it is, excuse me, city resident.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, seeing no further discussion, we'll go to item W, adjourned to closed session under Wisconsin statutes, Chapter 19.851E, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, a development agreement for housing incentive project, Prairie Run, sale of city-owned property at East 8th Street and Hemlock Avenue, and closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, Chapter 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, a consideration of statutes, status, and possible resolutions for litigation related to employment claims of a city employees. Or motion to go into closed session, I'm sorry. Motion by Mr. Budke. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Henler. Roll call vote, please.
Henler?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Budke?
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 Yes.
Thank you. We are in closed session.